All right, can I call the regular meeting of council order for Monday, December sixteenth? Take approval of the agenda, please, Councilor Norbury.
That the December sixteenth, twenty twenty four, regular council meeting agenda be adopted as presented?
Second, Councilor Clickash, all in favor? Carried adoption minutes for of December second, twenty twenty four, regular council meeting minutes be adopted as presented? How about looking for a motion on the adoption of the minutes? Councilor Norbury?
That the December second, twenty twenty four, regular council meeting minutes be adopted as presented?
Second, Council Julek, any errors or omissions from council? Staff? Thank you. All in favor? Carried business arising from the minutes, council? Staff?
No.
Thank you. Moving on to delegations, Urban Systems. Chad Carlstrom, Community Consultant, Urban Systems, and Sarah Ravlich, Social Health and Wellbeing Planner, Urban Matters, and attendance virtually to present to council the updated housing needs report. And are they on Zoom?
I'm here, can you hear me all right?
I can.
Great, thank you very much. My name is Sarah Ravlich, as mentioned, I'm a social planner with Urban Matters and our sister company, Urban Systems. I'm here tonight to share with you the District of Tumbler Ridge Housing Needs Report. And I do have some slides that I will put up, just give me a moment. Hopefully that's showing up for you there.
It is.
Perfect. Okay, so this is a look at the twenty twenty four Housing Needs Report. Tumbler Ridge did complete a comprehensive housing needs report in twenty twenty one. But since then, in late twenty twenty three, the provincial government has updated the requirements for housing needs reports and mandated that all municipalities complete an interim housing needs report by January first of twenty twenty five. There were three key changes or updates required for these interim housing needs reports. This includes that the number of housing units required to meet current and anticipated need for be projected for the next five and twenty years, which is a bit of a longer timeline than most municipalities looked at in their first round of housing needs reports. There's also the need for additional statements of need for housing near transit or active transportation infrastructure, where that is relevant for communities. And then a description of municipal action taken since adopting the previous housing needs report. And as mentioned, that would have been in twenty twenty one. So the data that's looked at for these housing needs reports, there's a variety of different data sources, but I would say the largest being the Stats Canada Census Profile. And data available for that is from twenty twenty one, so that is the majority of the data that we are looking at. I'm just going to touch a few of the data points in the next few slides here, and then we'll talk about those five and twenty year projections as well. So the first thing we've looked at is population growth, and as you can see here, Tumbler Ridge's population grew pretty considerably between twenty sixteen and twenty twenty one, there was a twenty percent increase. Prior to that, we do see that there was a dip between twenty eleven and twenty sixteen, and knowing local context, that's kind of due to changing economic and sector activity in the area. So we're kind of seeing that recovery in population in twenty twenty one and anticipate that that has probably continued since then. Looking at housing type or household type, so kind of what are the makeup of different households throughout Tumbler Ridge? We can see that non-census families make up thirty nine percent of the Tumbler Ridge population. And what non-census families are, these include those who are living on their own or are living with people who are not related to them. So most often, kind of like a roommate situation. We also see that census families, so households without children, make up quite a high proportion within Tumbler Ridge as well. About fifty percent of households are without children. And these can consist of married couples who don't have kids at home or older couples living together whose children may have moved out and no longer live with them in their household. This next set of data here looks at household growth and tenure mix, so whether we're looking at owner or renter households. We can see from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty one that Tumbler Ridge grew by two hundred and thirty five new households. So that's how many new households were formed in the community for a total of one thousand and ninety five households as of twenty twenty one. And this is kind of interesting when we look at the pattern when comparing the population growth over this kind of same time period. We can see that while the overall population decreased from two thousand and six to twenty twenty one, the number of private households actually increased. Likely, this is a result of kind of shifting household dynamics. So we might be seeing a population where existing residents are establishing their own separate households. So for example, this might be adult children who are moving out of their parents' home to live independently. When we look at a breakdown of tenure, like owner versus renter, we can see that sixty nine percent of households are homeowners and thirty two percent are renter households. And then this graph that you see here is a breakdown looking at twenty twenty one data. If we look at primary household maintainer, we're looking at the age and tenureship of those households. So trying to understand kind of when homeownership or rentership is most common across the life stages. And we can see that homeownership becomes most common starting at about thirty five to forty four years of age. You can see there that at that time, about sixty percent of households are owner households at that age. And that really does follow kind of just a common trajectory of household formation and income growth as individuals age. So looking at existing household stock, we can see that the majority of homes within Tumbler Ridge, sixty nine percent, are single detached homes. Also note that housing stock is a little bit older, so seventy one percent of the housing stock was developed between nineteen eighty one and nineteen ninety. And there has been relatively low rate of development since then. And you can kind of see how that is compared to the regional district as well. So this is looking at average household income. We can see from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty one, the average income of homeowners increased by thirty four percent. And we can also see that renters saw an increase of fifty two percent. However, homeowners or owner households still make about thirty eight percent more on average than renter households. We also know that this kind of more significant increase in renter households in twenty twenty one, that's a trend that we're seeing across the country. And a certain proportion of that can be attributed to COVID benefits that were received through through the pandemic. And you will see that that those same benefits kind of affect rates of core housing need and other key indicators around housing affordability for renters. So we may see that some of that shifts or levels out in the next round of census data when it is collected. This graph here looks at the the sales value of different home types from two thousand and six to twenty twenty three. We can see that the averaged assessed housing value rose by eleven percent between twenty sixteen and twenty twenty one. We also know, having spoken with local real estate professionals, that it is anticipated that there has been an increase in the average price of single detached homes from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty four. And this is likely driven by growing demand for housing as mine activity increases in the area. We've done an affordability analysis, looking at homeownership in Tumbler Ridge. So this analysis here, it's broken down by household type, you can see on the left. And then we have arrived at kind of some medium median household incomes based on twenty twenty four anticipated incomes. And then what an affordable monthly shelter cost would be. So affordable housing is considered to be when a household is paying no more than thirty percent of their income per month on shelter costs. And when we see kind of all green here, that means that each of those different housing types and those households they're corresponding with are meeting the affordability threshold. So currently, on average, across all household types and and housing types, Tumbler Ridge is considered to be still be a relatively affordable community. And I will just say, in the green, those numbers are kind of the the amount of money that is likely left over after housing cost is considered each month for each household. All right, core housing needs is an important kind of indicator of affordability, suitability, and adequacy of housing in a community. And it's looks at private households that are falling below any of those thresholds that also cannot afford a suitable alternative in the community. So they are both inadequate, unaffordable, and and unsuitable in the current household that they're in, and they cannot afford another option within the community. So looking from two thousand and six to twenty twenty one, we can see that core housing need over that time period seems to have peaked in twenty sixteen with renter households having the most significant rate of core housing need. And then we see quite a significant drop off in twenty twenty one in both renter and owner households in core housing need. Again, temporary relief measures due to the pandemic likely have influenced some of that drop off that we see in twenty twenty one. But we also know in the case of Tumbler Ridge that mines reopening in twenty sixteen likely has increased or sorry, decreased the rate of core housing need. So benefited the affordability rates for for households in the community. Okay, so looking at the five and twenty year housing capacity projections for Tumbler Ridge, the province has required in these housing needs reports that several additional components be looked at beyond just projected growth of the community. So this is no longer just about population growth, but looking at some more detailed components of housing need. So you'll see that the housing capacity numbers are broken down in the next slide into each of these components. But those include extreme core housing need, so those households that are paying more than fifty percent of their income on housing. What's the number of units that's needed to address those types of needs in the community? How much supply is needed to reduce rates of homelessness? How much supply is needed to address suppressed household formation? So these are households that would otherwise be forming, but for whatever reason cannot. Maybe they can't find affordable options. And this would be things like adult children who are still at home because they're unable to move out and form their own household. We also need to look at supply to meet household growth. Rental vacancy rate adjustment, so what would it take to achieve a healthy vacancy rate, which is considered to be three to five percent vacancy in a community? And then what the province is labeled a demand buffer. So this is looking at if there were enough creating enough units in a community for those individuals who may want to move to Tumbler Ridge but couldn't otherwise because there is just a lack of availability or a lack of stock. So what what does that demand look at like and how many units would it take to address that as well? So here you see those components broken down on the left. And then we have the five year need and the twenty year need. So looking at the provincial requirements and methodology to do this, it's anticipated that demand to meet demand and eliminate current housing need, three hundred and ninety five units would be required over the twenty year timeframe, so that would be by twenty forty one. And then between twenty twenty one and twenty twenty six, a hundred and nine units would be needed. If you look at the breakdown of units, most of that demand is really coming from anticipated growth. So it is still highly driven here by kind of trends in in population growth. So just finally here, next steps. So as noted, calculations show that a total of three hundred and ninety five units are required over the next twenty years to support current and future housing need and local market demand in Tumbler Ridge. The primary tool through which municipalities undertake these efforts is their official community plan. Previously, local governments were required to accommodate five years of growth in their OCP. However, with these new provincial requirements, OCPs are required to be updated to accommodate twenty years worth of growth. So that anticipated unit requirement in the twenty year timeframe. And that these OCP updates be completed by December thirty first of twenty twenty five. Local governments are also required to continue to complete regular updates to their housing needs reports. And that next update will be required by December thirty first of twenty twenty eight. Okay. That's everything for me.
All right, well, thank you very much for presenting the the report to council. I'm going to open up the floor if there's any questions from council. Councilor Norbury?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kalka, thank you for your presentation. I love seeing these types of things and where we're heading. I'd like to ask a little bit about the hundred and nine units needed. Do you have any insight on what type of units we should be looking for? It sort of looks like we have a lot of one person households at thirty six percent. Should we be trying to look at those condo development or or just a mix of everything? Do you have any insight there?
Yeah, that's a great question. We haven't looked at breakdown of kind of projected household type. But I think you are correct, just looking at the current population size, the size of homes in the community, it's really those smaller units that aren't necessarily available. There is a large percentage of single family homes. But kind of looking at population formation, there may be more opportunity for that kind of one or two bedroom unit or or home. That being said, that's kind of just speculation based on on what we're seeing in the population. And we haven't actually done a breakdown of of housing type.
I have one more, but I'll open it up.
Oh, go ahead.
I maybe I'm getting into weeds a little bit on this one, but do you have any other other suggestions for us other than have a no? Just have it in our OCP plan? Like one of the issues that we have in Tumbler Ridge is that the costs of our houses are quite low. One of it's it's hard, it's really prohibitive to build in Tumbler Ridge due to that. Some of the ideas that have been floated for us as a municipality on how to address to entice building would be to have area zone already for them. Having prefabricated schematics for building, for builders. Yeah, do you have any other free tips you want to float our way? Maybe Chad's on the call, he can help us out, I don't know.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, I mean, there is, I think, a larger project that is looking at some some of these questions as well that that Urban Systems is supporting. So I think likely there's some better answers for you there as as they better understand kind of, I think, the the context for local development in the area. I mean, the things you are mentioning are issues that most communities in B C are are facing when it comes to attracting development. I will say the the affordability piece is a little bit different for Tumbler Ridge. We're not seeing as many communities that continue to be generally affordable for for most households. So that is certainly, I think, a benefit that you you have as a community. But yeah, I hesitate to answer too deeply that question, knowing that there there is some other work underway, I think, to to look more closely at those types of questions.
Fair enough, I just try.
Council Julek?
I have a question for Sarah and then I have a couple for staff, but when would I?
Delegation.
Okay, go ahead. Hi, Sarah, I was wondering where you got the data from for the like the data that's in the report? Is that from the federal census?
Yeah, so a lot of it will be the Stats Canada Census Profile for Tumbler Ridge. We also look at B C stats for some of the data. B C Assessment has provided us with the assessed values of of homes. We also will often look at municipal data and data from C M H C. I do know within the report, when you do see that, we have included for each piece of data where where that has come from. So you'll be able to see that breakdown in a little more detail.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from council? I have a couple, and Council Julek already asked one of them. The other one would be, are when I see the numbers of a hundred and nine and five year needed, that doesn't put into the fact that we could have other mines come on board?
Yeah, so so I want to be really clear that those numbers are not based on population projection projections necessarily. Like, there's a lot of components that go into that, and they are really those numbers are really about just making sure that planning policy and the planning environment is able to accommodate at minimum that level of growth. That doesn't necessarily account for, as you say, if more mines come on, there could be quite a bump in the population. And that that anticipated need could increase or decrease over time. Really, what the provincial government is looking for is that that growth that they are, they have this prescribed methodology, that that growth can be accommodated within planning policy and the planning environment.
Okay, so so I guess my thought is, and maybe I'm wrong for thinking it that way. But if we're planning in a five-year needed for a hundred and nine, we have a fairly good pulse that a mine may be coming on board here fairly quick. You ever mind other other mining organizations that are that are looking at moving forward on some of their projects? But also B C Hydro calling for wind. We may not have been selected in the area for the first for the first round. But how do we make sure that we calculate those numbers into this thing so that we're not updating it six months from now?
Mm hmm. Yeah, and I mean, again, this is doesn't necessarily identify actual growth. It's it's really around making sure that the policies are accommodating enough at minimum to manage that growth. It it doesn't mean that you necessarily will will see all of that growth growth or that that is the only growth that you will see. It's really like a a base number defined by the province through this really prescriptive methodology that they have. And I will say that, you know, the methodology is not necessarily realistic for all communities. You know, the the local context for Tumblr Ridge perhaps being a good example of that, where the need for housing and the population growth can be can change quite rapidly. And that's kind of why, you know, in previous housing needs reports, not many communities were projecting out to twenty years because that is a very difficult timeline to create some certainty around. And things can change quite rapidly. So again, I wouldn't hold on to these too strongly as like, this is the projected growth for our community. It's really just one way to think about it. And and really is just kind of focused around making sure that those policies are accommodating of this this kind of prescribed number.
Okay, thank you for that. And then on one of your slides there under the owner affordability, do you do a renter one? Or is it only under under the owner part of it?
For Tumblr Ridge, unfortunately, because not as much data is available on renter households, we were not able to do an affordability analysis for renter households. And that's likely due to things like data suppression that that happens in in some smaller communities and things like that. So just through the data that was available, unfortunately, we're only able to do an owner, a look at owner affordability at this time.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions from council? All right, well, thank you very much for presenting in in front of council for us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, moving on to a second delegation is Ministry of Forests, Christine Taylor, Land and Resource Specialist, and Robert Warner, Director of Wildfire Recovery, in attendance to present to council the highlights of the Crown Land Wildfire Risk Reduction Program and the progress on the current Wildland Urban Interface Wildfire Risk Reduction Plan. Welcome.
Hi.
Hi there.
Thank you. I'll just share my screen here. Did that come through okay?
It did.
Perfect. Good evening. Yes, my name is Christine Taylor. So I'm the Land and Resource Specialist with our Northeast Region's Wildfire Rehabilitation and Risk Reduction Team. I'm accompanied by Bob Warner, we've already introduced, which is great. He is our Director of Wildfire Recovery for the Northeast. Originally, we had hoped to and planned to present this information to you in person last month in conjunction with a presentation that we were providing for community members as well. Unfortunately, things had to get rescheduled. And this was the next timeframe that we would able to were able to present it to you. But we're happy to be here and also to just share this time and information with you guys today. So this is our agenda. Just a few acknowledgements to make. Our talk a little bit about wildfire prevention and funding, the provincial strategic threat analysis, and the Wildland Urban Interface, which is the WUI Wildfire Risk Reduction Plan. We'll look at some areas of interest that are within this this year's WUI plan. And we'll talk more specifically about Tumblr Ridge and the area of interest around Tumblr Ridge and the risk assessments that are ongoing there. We'll look a little bit at what wildfire risk reduction work and potential treatments actually look like. And I did have a couple of short video clips that I had hoped to share with you. But quite often, there's some, you know, kind of I T issues with sharing video clips online. So I thought what I would do is just share the links with you afterwards. And people can choose to watch them on their own time if they have if they have the time. So I just wanted to acknowledge that we're presenting the information to you on the Treaty Eight First Nations territory. And I also wanted to acknowledge that we understand the previous, you know, fire history within the Tumblr Ridge community and the surrounding area. And that the work that has been done you know, by the town members as well as the community forests, and and just also the stress that is kind of goes along with that as you guys have tried to navigate each and every fire that has come your way. This picture shows, you know, just existing older fires over the years. And it just kind of lays a little bit out in front of us about, you know, just the risk around the community. And I hope that the information that we have to share with you today will help, you know, just so that we're taking steps to try to help the community and that we're also, you know, we're happy to answer any questions throughout the presentation as well as at the end. So there's two main programs within the CRI program, which is the Community Resiliency Investment Program. But above that, it sits side by side with the Forest Enhancement Society of B C within wildfire prevention and funding. And then underneath that is the two streams of work, which is so we've got Crown Land Wildfire Risk Reduction, and then we've got Fire Smart Community Funding and Supports. And with the Fire Smart Community, you guys are are very well taken care of in that aspect and familiar with it. And within the Crown Land Wildfire Risk Reduction side, we've got two streams of work. One is fuel management, and that one is mostly about the reduction of forest fuels for fuel or for forest management and other land use kind of objectives, but also cultural and prescribed fires as well. There's quite a few different funding sources for for this type of work within the Community Resiliency Investment Program. This slide outlines some of them, but it's actually not all of them. The CRI program, it was actually introduced by the provincial government back in two thousand and eighteen. And it's intended to reduce wildfire risks and wildfire impacts in British Columbia. And it mostly for communities and by providing funding and support to complete Fire Smart initiatives, including priority fuel management activities on Crown Land. And the Fire Smart is for more so for private land, whereas the the work that we're primarily focusing on is on Crown Land. So within that, like we already mentioned, there's the Forest Enhancement Society of B C. And so there's different different structure, I guess, and different kind of this one has to be on Crown Land as well as the Community Resilience Program. And whereas the First Nations Emergency Services Society is for on reserved lands and but also on traditional territories. Then there's funding that's outside of wildfire risk reduction. And that's the, you know, we've got four listed here, but there's actually quite a few other ones. And and it's, you know, they're broken down into areas that are really specific for each type of emergency that they're outlined for. But these four are the main ones that you would see throughout, like, if anybody were to need to reach out to any of them. And we can provide the links for these ones as well at the end. So how do we get to actually putting together a WUI plan? And that's, you know, that's kind of, we start with the provincial strategic threat analysis. And the most recent one was completed in twenty twenty-one. And it was, it's designed to consistently assess and map potential wildfire threats to values across the landscape. And this includes communities, infrastructure, and natural resources. And it's to integrate different aspects of wildfire hazards and risks. So what it can do is it can aid resource managers like ourselves and other proponents in viewing land management activities through a fire management lens, so to speak. It's where, you know, objectives that can include reducing damage from wildfire wildfires, sorry, improving the effectiveness and cost efficiency of wildfire suppression, and also making ecosystems and communities more fire resilient. So the analysis, I mean, I've got a picture up here, and it's got a whole bunch of different colors on it and everything. But it's, you know, it has quite a few different things within it. And on this picture here, it's showing the threat rating map. And it's showing Tumblr Ridge there. But the different colors overlapping the community and the surrounding area, what it's showing is that green is is the low risk and going up to red, which is high risk. And there's key inputs that go into the threat analysis. And so the first is fire density. And then there's head fire intensity and spotting impact. And those are all taken into consideration within the Wildland Urban Interface area. So these three three data layers, I guess, are are combined and used like a weighted sum process to be able to come up with a final threat analysis value. And the values range from typically from zero to one hundred. And then it's weighted like thirty percent weighted towards fire density and sixty percent towards head fire intensity and ten percent towards spotting impact. We have a threshold, which is typically right around that class seven, where it starts at high there. And the values within here range between thirty-three to forty on that one hundred-point scale. And like I said, that's considered to be a threshold. And and that's where we, when we're looking at analysis around different communities, then we're looking somewhere around the six and seven rating there. Areas that, like I said, like when we're looking for the WUI plan, areas that fall within within these higher classes are most in need of risk mitigation. And where it's feasible to do so, then that's where we want to look. The provincial strategic threat analysis, it it represents like a single point in time. It's important to remember that it's just a snapshot. And it doesn't take into consideration like future changes. So while there has been fires on the landscape since 2021, it's important to remember that the analysis was completed in 2021. And so we have to take all of those other pieces of information into into effect afterwards. So this here is our current WUI plan. And so what I'm showing you here is the communities that we've focused on for this year. So we've got Tumblr Ridge and Moberly Lake, Chatwin, Hudson's Hope, Kiss Katna and Fort Nelson. And around Fort Nelson, we actually combined two different areas. There's Fort Nelson and and Musquea. At this point, and well, actually, before before we get to this point, we're taking into consideration feedback from communities that have already previously reached out to us or to somebody on, you know, the Northeast Region team. And that's when we start developing the WUI plan, and we're looking at higher-risk areas. And that's also when we start reaching out to other communities and also to nations that we haven't heard from yet. We want to, you know, talk with district staff. We've talked to the fire chief at Tumblr Ridge. We've reached out to the community forest as well and other community members as well. And just get feedback and make sure that where we're focusing, you know, our efforts on is what the communities want to see be focused on as well, and that we're not missing out some piece of the puzzle that, you know, has already happened or that, you know, there's major concerns of other areas that maybe we've missed out on. So currently, we have a contractor and that's working on kind of fine tuning. So while we've put together these areas for the WUI plan, we then have a contractor that's looking at further risk assessments within those areas. That contractor is Frontera Forest Solutions. I know that they've done work within the community before. And they've, you know, since since the work that they did a few years back, they've done, you know, they've really expanded their knowledge base and and their resume. And and we're looking forward to really seeing what they have to offer us as an end product on these as well. So this this image here, it shows what we call an area of interest. And it's the the area around Tumblr Ridge, obviously. But we use a two-and-a-half-kilometer buffer around the community and kind of look within there. And at this point, you know, this is where Frontera comes in, and they do a further risk assessment that really looks more at the topography and and the fuels that are on the ground and wind direction and all of those pieces that come into play at this point. So on this map here, this is where kind of shows a few different things here. But the purple outline is the proposed area of interest. And that's, that's what we started with. It also shows this orange area, which this is what comes with the provincial strategic threat analysis. And it's the WUI area that basically is showing us anything that has greater than six structures per, like, square kilometer. Because we're dealing with Crown Land, then we take out the private land or municipal land for this purpose. And we'd look at anything within that. Sorry. Another piece that we've actually done is we did a contract amendment just a couple of months ago, and we added a second area within Tumblr Ridge. And so this is down in the industrial area. And it takes your the airport and some of the other smaller or the industrial private property into consideration just around it, the Crown Land that's around it. I know that there is some blowdown areas down there. And I and and quite a bit of it, while it's in the community forest, I have talked with Duncan as well. And we've looked at some area down there that's blown down and and, you know, possibly a higher risk. So we decided that it would be a good addition to the plan for this year and be able to just really make it a bit more efficient to have, if we're having a contractor out there, to be able to focus on both areas at the same time. The airport itself was brought up in a few different conversations, just based on the fact that it's really the only airport within the area. And it's an important method of transportation. And, you know, it's it's a need for any kind of emergencies or any wildfire situations as well. So from here, this is really where So from here, this is really where Frontera comes in. And they've put this together, it's very preliminary. But what they've done is they've really narrowed down areas within the polygons that we sent them. So in this image here, it's the green underneath the wildfire management unit side is priority one. And the orange is priority two. And it's just a slow process of how they really kind of pare down and start looking at what what's needed to move forward and where they are thinking that prescriptions, any possible prescriptions for in the future would would be beneficial. On the right hand side, the wildfire risk reduction units. So on this one, the green, what they've identified that is as a fuel break. And then the purple would be more of a priority two, and that's more around the community there. So it's very preliminary, like I said, but it's also just the the start of what they were doing. And from here, then there's there's field work, which is also being completed. So based off of that, then we kind of start looking once, once we would get a prescription completed, which would be, you know, Frontera finishes up their contract by the end of February. And so we'll have some units that they will present back to us that will be identified with higher risk and throughout all the communities, not just Tumblr Ridge. And then from there, we'll put out a contract for prescriptions to have them developed. And that's when we start looking at possible types of wildfire risk reduction treatments and, you know, what that could look like around the areas. So I know the community forest has done quite a bit of work around the area. And so there's, you know, other options as well, like cultural and prescribed burns, pruning, mulching and chipping. And, you know, quite often removing that waste or sometimes you can leave some of it on site. And then bigger operations like mechanical falling, harvesting, selective harvesting. All of those, there's lots of, I think you guys have had lots of success with the areas around the community. And I had a, I had a great tour with Duncan a couple of months ago, which really, you know, was eye opening to see what's already been done as well. I think there's also a lot of challenges with treatments around northern communities. And, you know, that kind of comes down to sometimes a lack of contractor availability or shorter seasons in the north. Heavy equipment work is typically needing to happen on a snowpack or frozen soils. And sometimes, you know, that can just make it so that we're operating in timeframes where it's might be, you know, only two or three months out of the year. Really depends on the, on the area of the treatment unit and and what we're doing. I'm just going to skip through those, sorry. And that brings us to the contacts for the Northeast. So besides Bob and myself, we also have Melanie Webster, who's our integrated investment specialist. And then we have Enrico Fionde, who is our wildfire prevention officer. I think Enrico has met with quite a few different people within the community. And he's a great source of knowledge, as is Melanie. And that's all I have in our presentation. Thank you very much for your time. And if you have any questions, then please ask away.
Perfect. Thank you very much for your presentation. I think apologize that we had to move a meeting and then obviously you still went out to the public, which is great. But I apologize that I wasn't able to attend your public engagement. I was actually out of the community, but it's great to see the engagement happen. It it's great to see that we're moving forward on making sure this gets done. I think it's very, very important, not only due to us having a wildfire in 2022, or I guess 2023, sorry. But I think it's very important that we move forward on, you know, as this comes forward. And it sounds like it's supposed to be done around the end of February from the contractor's side. So, you know, I look forward to seeing what the concept is for some of the prescriptions. Because I think it's important and I think that's what our residents asked for when we had our our wildfire was, you know, we had one in 2016. And it seemed to fall off the radar and what was done. But actually, our community forest had done a lot within the community when it come to prescribed areas. It became high hazard within the community. So it, I think we need to start looking as we border the community before it gets into our community. So I'm going to open up the questions to council and then I have a couple at the end. Councilor Norbury.
Thank you, Mary Calca. Thank you for coming in and presenting. Interesting information. I had a question regarding the the data that was collected like on the the red and an orange map there. Is this data based upon like age of the trees, like how dry they are type deal? Was there any thought into traditional wind patterns in terms of threat to the community?
So there is, there's quite a few different things that go into it. But the forest fuels is definitely a big piece of it. I would, maybe Bob knows, I'm not too sure that wind is taken into account at this point in it. It's, I mean, we take it into account when we do further analysis.
Yeah, I don't think at that, at this stage, it's probably not. It's just, it's just the fuel and the combustible of the fuel. Wind is something that we would look at once we get that plan.
Yeah.
Fair enough. Thank you. Because one of the points that was brought up during our last, you know, wildfire issue was that traditionally the the wind is actually going from south to north. So, you know, looking at the the prescriptions with a lot of it being on the northern side of Tumblr Ridge, just something, something for me thinking about, you guys are the experts, I totally trust you. So I'm not second guessing you there, it's just, you know, something that's been brought to my attention. Another question I had was in regards to new species introduction in our forests. One of the issues that I have is being our community forest representative is like when we go down and we harvest timber, we're not allowed to reforest with diversity of tree species. We have to plant only what we got. And, you know, over however many years of forestry, we're finding that you can only plant harvestable wood for forestry products. Is there any way, is there any, is that on the horizon for the Ministry of Forests at allowing or allowing species, different species to be planted for wildfire resiliency? Or, you know, allowing communities to do that? Because there is an extreme opinion in our community of just making a eight kilometer buffer zone. Now, I would prefer to have that inter mingled with species diversity to help with the wildfire resiliency versus just a parking lot. But yeah, I'll leave that there. So to simplify it a little bit, any thoughts about if or when we could see allowing different species to be planted after harvesting?
Do you want to take that one, Bob?
Absolutely. I think there's a, we are recognizing that there is some need for resilience around communities. And there is, you know, there's the timber supply we have to be cognizant of. But there's, we can do some mixed, some mixed species for sure and some buffers as well. Depending on what the situation is, but it's not, it's not Connor for Connor anymore, definitely not.
So that's, that maybe a go talk to the minister type request, I'm guessing, hey?
Well, we're working on, we're working on some standards right now with 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 the risk reduction standards. So for resilience, there are standards. I'm not familiar with what they are exactly, but there, there is more deciduous component. There is reduced stalking. It doesn't have to be a full, full stalking stand, but it is reduced stalking with with a deciduous component allowable there.
Thank you. Not to get too conversational with you, but, you know, in my opinion, I'm, I'm okay with industry taking a little bit of a backseat to safety in this regard. And and I can appreciate timber stock because, you know, being a community forest representative, forestry brings jobs at the same time. We need to have communities that aren't burnt to provide those jobs. Another question, if I may, Mayor, thank you. One of the issues that has come up with some of these wildfire prescriptions, like when we're doing mechanical falling and mulching and stuff like that, we're finding that if left alone, there's quite a large grass growth issue in that area. Is that when we could sort of see prescribed burns coming into effect to help mitigate that? And the reason why I bring that up is that, you know, within, you know, three, four years, we have this knee high, waist high grass, depending on who you are, that is highly fiable in those prescribed areas. And, you know, we were, the wildfire risk has, you know, increased. So is there a plan to create a framework for every three years? You got to get back in there and, you know, mow this stuff, do a controlled burn. Is that something that the the Ministry of Forests would be, is looking at?
Yeah, so we have, what we're looking at doing is really trying to do more of a maintenance program as well afterwards. And you're right, like in some of those areas where grass is coming back or you might be getting a lot of regen and maybe, you know, you're getting more ladder fuels. That's where we want to do a maintenance program and have, you know, come back in and do surveys, you know, however far apart we decide that, you know, it depends on the, on the area. But absolutely, I think it's important that we keep up with it and we keep monitoring them. And also just listen to the community for feedback on what their concerns are as well.
Great. Thanks for your time.
Counselor Julik.
Hi, really interesting presentation. And and my question for you is on the map with the fire threat rate, fire threat rating. Lots of yellow, orange and red. So as somebody who lives here and you look that it's to the east there, it's definitely a concern. And so if you could maybe put in lay terms what that looks like for you guys when you see something like that? And then my other question would be, who's ultimately responsible? Who do we, like, is it the WRR? Is there responsibility on the District of Tumblr Ridge to follow through with things, that kind of stuff?
So I mean, back to the provincial strategic threat analysis. So with the map, I mean, that's where, like I said, there's that threshold, that that kind of number seven threshold. And that's where we focus looking at around communities. And then the number of structures around the community, like the density within it. So that's kind of where where we start our analysis. And then from there, we move it forward with contractors doing actually the more like finer, finer detailed information gathering field, you know, like actually field truthing it and and figuring out what's, what kind of fuels are around that community. I'm not too sure if that answers your question about that one or not.
I think so, like when you talked about the number seven being high and then I refocus because I see to the east, there's all of the colors. And then I see closer to town, I see what you mean around the number seven and stuff. So what you're saying is, is you guys take a look at it, then you send it out to contractors? And then there just is a sequential set of ways of doing things? And is that right?
Yeah, so, I mean, we, we send it out to Frontera. So and they're just doing a further risk assessment, like they're really fine tuning it and looking at all the details, including like what was brought up before, the wind direction. And, you know, like the topography and, you know, what type of trees are there and how dry they are, you know, how they're being impacted by, you know, beetle, like what's the forest health situation? They're really like looking at the fine details to make sure that, you know, because we could, we have the provincial strategic threat analysis and and it takes a lot of values into account. But it's, like we said, it's, you know, kind of a snapshot more so in time. It's, you know, it's already three years old, that one is, and they do redo it every few years. But and they're working on a model that will represent it more in real time than than more so a snapshot. But even though there is areas that are higher risk around the community, that's where you look at doing like a fuel break or, you know, different types of things like that.
And yeah, I'm glad that you reminded me this is 2021 data. I was thinking that it was triggered, I was thinking you guys were brought into this and that was triggered by the forest fire in 2023. So now it's, I'm reminded that this obviously is a provincial plan. So this just continues to go on. There's nothing that needs to be done by the District of Tumblr Ridge to make sure that this attention still continues to be paid to our area so far as fire mitigation.
No, so right now, I mean, like, like I mentioned, the contract that Frontera is working on, their portion wraps up at the end of February. And then from there, you know, we kind of make the next steps. And we're definitely happy to share the information that they provide. And I know that at the community meeting as well, there were some folks that had left their email addresses for for them to be kind of kept in the loop of how things are progressing as well. And we're happy to share that information along the lines with you guys, too.
Thank you very much. I also was out of town when you were in town, so I'll stop asking questions.
No, no, it's good. It's good. I mean, we, yeah, I'm glad that some people were able to make it. And it's too bad that that it fell on a timeframe where you guys were all very busy.
Counselor Klikash.
Yes, in the last week or two, we've been looking at different areas for development. And when I look at this map and where you've got extreme wooded areas and that was, is the areas that we're looking to develop. So I think both the forestry and the town should get together and figure this out. Because if we're, if we're going to have, be in an extreme area and and put in a subdivision in there, it's could be dangerous.
And and we are aware of some of the development, like the expansion of municipal land in place of where some of the community forest was behind the the equine center. But if there's other areas, then that definitely helps. But you also have the Fire Smart program as well, which is mostly focused on private property, right? So.
Okay, thank you.
But definitely, you know, communication, open communication is key. And if you are able to share with me the areas that you're talking about afterwards, then that would be great.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions from council? I have a couple. See, you mentioned about the contractor, it should be, sounds like to me around the end of February. When would we see a plan for the subscriptions and what they look like?
Yeah, so after the, after Frontera is finished with this portion of the contract, then we'll put out another bid for like another contract for a prescription. So once that part moves forward, you know, it'll take, it does take a while to, to, you know, make the, get everything finalized. But we would be looking at, a rough estimate would be sometime in the summer that we would have prescriptions finalized.
Okay, thank you very much for that. And and my understanding is, maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but when we attended the UBCM, this is one of our asks in 2023 from the Ministry of Forests. After we returned back from ministry meetings, we ended up meeting with representatives out of Prince George for B C Wildfire. And they had mentioned to us then that this is what triggered it on the radar for us to reevaluate these prescriptions or these areas of threat. Is that correct?
Do you know that one, Bob?
No, I don't know that one. I'm sorry. I can look into that, though.
Yeah, and I only asked, I just be, you know, it's just, to me, it's important when we're meeting with ministers that they're actually listening to us. And the reason we're asking for it to to be relooked at and to make sure that the landscape hasn't changed in regards to the to the threats and we see it, I mean, it's all yellow and red. And that's a huge concern in regards to municipality and for the residents to live here. And I, I do appreciate the expansion of out into the heavy industrial area in this map as well as the airport. I think it's very, very important that you guys captured that. So thank you for for capturing that and adding it to that map intake. Because it's very, very important on some of the infrastructure that we do have out in the heavy industrial area, but as well as the airport. It is a underused airport, but it's definitely used for emergencies with B C ambulance for their fixed wings or Alberta. So we appreciate that being added because of the fuel that content that's out there. And then you'd also mentioned in regards to a lot of the blowdown area that is out of that way. And I, and I think it's important to capture that because my understanding, north to us in the P R D area, a lot of that blowdown that happened out past Fort St. John, that was one of the, one of the biggest fires. a lot of that blowdown that happened out, um, past Fort St. John, that was one of where the, one of the biggest fires was because of the blowdown. They couldn't, they couldn't access it as easily as a standing, a standing tree fire.
Yeah, it is difficult for crews to be able to gain access into areas for any kind of suppression efforts in order, like, when there's blowdown like that, absolutely.
Okay. And then, yeah, I think, um, I think like Counselor Klikash mentioned about areas, and you'd already mentioned the one, the Saddle Club in regards to rural stuff. And, and I think if, if the town is looking at other areas, I imagine it's on, it'll be on your radar. Um, and yeah, I think we need to be kept updated. If you, if you wouldn't mind just keeping staff updated in regards to when the contractor finishes and how we move forward.
Absolutely.
As my thing last year is, I did try to push for, um, and my thing was some, you know, whether it was culture and prescribed burns. And Counsel Norbury had mentioned some of it, and that's the, the long grass that we see in certain areas where there, that's on the backside of Burj on that, you know, it's an uphill. Majority of the time, the wind does come from that way and blow towards the, the houses there. So that's, that was one of the things that we'd reached out to BC Wildfire. I'd say late this year, hopefully we'll, we'll do it again, but it'll be earlier to look at some of this concept. If we can look at things just to try to protect the municipality from just on the edge of residential areas. So I look forward to seeing what, uh, prescribed concepts come forward from the contractor.
Awesome. Yeah, no, we're, um, we're excited about it and we'll definitely, um, we'll share everything that comes in and, uh, get you guys' feedback on it.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Klikash.
Yes, I just noticed, uh, on this plan out, outside where our industrial park is, that, uh, we also have PNG, the PNG plant, um, gas plant out there that treats our gas, uh, for heating here in town. And it just barely, the ring just barely touches that. In fact, I don't think it even touches that plant. So that plant is outside that area, uh, of the Mover purple circle.
Okay.
So, um, maybe that should be considered because, uh, we need heat here.
And, and it's not a, um, like a set in stone type of area that's been identified. So what I'll do is I'll make sure to mention the plant to Frontera. It is based on, um, like I mentioned, though, structure density. And, you know, like just the community and, and, but, like I said, if, if it's not on there or if it doesn't take it into consideration, then I'll definitely, uh, pass that on to our contractor and have them have a look at it.
Great, thank you. Okay, any other questions from council? All right, well, thank you very much again for, uh, coming in and, and presenting virtually to, uh, council staff. So thank you very, very much.
No problem. Thank you for having us.
Okay, moving on to CTI Plus, Judy Matkaluk. I hope I pronounced that right. Manager of Regulatory Affairs and Engagement. Will be in attention, will be in attendance virtually to update council on the Rocky Creek, um, metallurgical coal project.
Thank you, Mayor Krikova, and good evening, mayor and, and council. It was last June since I met you all. And I'd first like to, um, thank, on behalf of CTI Plus, for the opportunity to give you an update on the Rocky Creek Metallurgical Coal Project here this evening. And before I begin my presentation, I'd like to acknowledge that this presentation is being heard on the traditional territory of the Treaty Eight and Kelly Lake Nations. And I am presenting on the traditional territory of the Kalachan tribes. Joining me today, my presentation are my colleagues, Dr. Yuna Lee, who I believe you all met last June, and, and Sherred Redd, our CFO, and also Melissa Zakira, our project manager. And Melissa will be assisting me with, um, the slides today in the presentation. And I'm just gonna, I wanted to go on camera here, I apologize. My camera doesn't seem to be working. Yeah, we'll just, you know, keep on going here and I'll try to get the camera going at the end. Okay, so, next slide, Melissa. So what I would like to do this evening is give you a bit of the summary of the Rocky Creek project and from last June, and then the, what we've been doing since we last met. So, uh, Q3 of 2024, Q4 of 2024, and then our proposed timelines. And just a brief summary of who, who we are. So CTI Plus, we're coal to our metallurgical coal. We're a private Canadian resource company in Calgary. We have staff in Alberta and British Columbia. Our key focus obviously is on metallurgical coal. You know, I, you're used to the met coal projects with Tech and Kanuma. And we have a very small team, there's five of us right now on the CTI Plus team, but we all are very experienced with exploration and development of met coal projects. And just as, uh, again, a refresher, the project is halfway between Tumbler Ridge and Chetwind. Forty-seven kilometers southwest of Chetwind. Or as most of you are familiar with, the Kanuma Brule Mine, we're seven kilometers south of the Brule Mine. And just a bit more on the, uh, location. Travelings out of Chetwind south, turn on, south on the Skunka Road, goes 16.6 kilometers. And then turn onto the Blind Creek Road, 2.5 kilometers southwest. And until you get to the Lower Burt Road, go 15.5 kilometers west. And then on 10 kilometers down, the West Jig Road. So again, just to refresh from last June when we met you, the proposed mine plan, we're looking at two blocks. We're looking at the northwest block and the southeast block. We're looking at proposing six open pits in the northwest block and one open pit in the southeast block. We're looking at the proposed rail loop, we're loadout near the CN Rail in the Hasler Flat area. And we're currently in the, you know, discussion with Hasler Flat residents. We're looking at an estimate 14 years in total for mine operations. And we're also estimating 250 direct jobs, of which CTI Plus will be looking at utilizing a local workforce, or as we say, local talent. And again, here's the map just showing more of the detailed location. As I mentioned before, so down the Skunka Road, onto the Blind Creek Road, Lower Burt Road, and then 10 kilometers west on the Jig Road. So since the, of the last year, we have been engaged with the indigenous communities. This project, we triggered both the provincial and the federal. So consequently, we engage with the First Nations, the Blueberry, the Halfway, the Kelly Lake Métis, Métis Nation BC, the West Moberly First Nation, Doig First Nation, and McLeod Lake and Soto First Nations. I think this slide wasn't on there. And of course, we engage with the District of Chetwind and Tumbler Ridge. Those are the two districts we're engaged with, and other, the local governments, tenure holders, and private landowners. Since August of 2023 is when we started our environmental baseline studies. And so we've been continually doing the environmental baseline. We're using consultants, uh, EDI out of Prince George, and also ERM out of Vancouver and, and Calgary. And there is a list on the screen of all of the, um, various disciplines that we have been analyzing, testing, and collecting on a monthly basis. Okay, now the update. So since we last saw you, we've been fairly busy. In July, we submitted the draft of the initial project description and initial engagement plan to the BCEAO and to IAC, the Impact Assessment Agency Canada. Again, as I mentioned previously, this project triggers both the, the provincial and the federal, um, assessments, environmental assessments. In July, we participated in the West Moberly First Nation Cultural Days, and we continued on with our month, monthly environmental baseline monitoring. Moving on to August, we participated in the McLeod Lake Indian Band Annual Gen- General Assembly. We conducted archaeology preliminary reconnaissance field work. This did not involve any shovel testing, it was just basically identifying areas that could be high impact on, um, archaeology, uh, artifacts. And those areas that were identified as could be high impact were immediately flagged off, where there would be no disturbance. We started our weekly meetings with the BCEAO and IAC. Then towards the end of August, we participated in Soto First Nations Cultural Camp. And then August 26th was a kind of milestone. We submitted the final initial project description and engagement plan to BCEAO and to IAC. And this is, was the start of early engagement. And we also, again, continued our monthly environmental baseline monitoring. Moving on to September, we, you know, forwarded our, the initial project description and engagement plan to the communities and First Nation communities for review by BCEAO and IAC. Then we met the Regulatory Technical Assessment Committee, or TAC, as it is called, has, to meet them and to answer any questions they may have. We did field work of testing of overburned samples. And again, we continued our monthly environmental baseline monitoring. In October, the public comment period started on October 6th. This was posted on the website of the, of EPAC, the BCEAO. We had an open house with BCEAO and IAC in Chetwind on October 16th. And we had an open house with, again, EA and IAC in Tumbler Ridge on October 17th. Our, um, attendants in the open house in Tumbler Ridge, who want to again, uh, thank the District Tumbler Ridge. We had warm hospitality, we had over 80 people attend our open house. And for both open houses, we had North Star Kitchen and Catering that catered it and just did a fabulous, fabulous job. We were just very impressed with North Star and Amber at the lead there. And on October 22nd, again with BCEAO and IAC, we had a virtual information session. So November, our, the public comment period ended on November 6th. Then on November 26th, it was the final day for comments from TAC and the nations. And again, we continued our monthly environmental baseline monitoring. So this brings us into, uh, December. We're waiting to receive what called the JOSI, or the Joint Summary of Issues and Engagement, from, um, the BCEAO that they received and, and put together. And we're ending next week, um, just year-end of summary meetings with all the indigenous nations. So looking now at our timelines, we are on schedule, we have achieved what we wanted to achieve, and that would, again, was getting acceptance of the initial project description and engagement plan. Now in 2025, what our priority is, is to submit the detailed project description on April 1st. And come this fall, 20, or 2025 fall, is to complete the base, the environmental baseline studies or data, data collection. Moving on to 2026, our plan is in the Q3, is submission of the EA application. And then following the year later, at the end of 2027, we're hoping to receive the environmental certificates, both provincially and federally. Looking into 2028, in, um, the spring of 2028, we're hoping to receive the Mines Act permit. And then, of course, once we've received the Mines Act permit, start construction. And two years for construction in 2030, we're hoping to begin mine operations and, of course, production. I'd like to thank you for your time this evening to the update in the Rocky Creek Metallurgical Coal Project. And if you have any information or any questions at all, or need information, please go on, um, website at info@ctiplsresources.com. And CTI Plus wish all of you happy holidays to you and your families. And ready for questions?
Thanks very much, Judy, for the update and, and keeping council updated as you guys move through your project. Questions from council? Counselor Julik?
Not so much a question, I just, uh, really appreciated your presentation. It had a lot of information. And I have to say, I was surprised at how long of a period you guys have to wait to get to actual pulling some coal out of the, out of the ground. But, uh, really appreciated that and happy holidays back to you guys and, and, uh, I hope you're very successful.
Counselor Hoffman.
Thank you. Uh, not a question either. I just wanted to let you know that I really appreciate the format that you did here. I like the, even if there's two quarters at once, but I just, if this is what continues, uh, from CTI, it would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any questions from council? I have a couple, Judy, if I may. Is there any trigger point in regards to your application, if it becomes into any caribou habitat?
No, caribou habitat, you know, we're, uh, uh, obviously, you know, been doing a lot of research studies. We've hired top consultants to do these studies. And are, they're telling us that, you know, we're in, um, um, non-critical habitat. But that being said, the nations we work with, particularly the West Moberly and the Soto, they want, you know, more information on that. So we are getting, you know, trying to provide more information, find out more. We have committed to the First Nations that we will hire guardians, particularly from the Soto and the West Moberly guardians to go out there and do site visits. And, you know, ensure before we do any activity, you know, that, um, we're not impacting caribou. But it will, it's, will always be ongoing and it's always going to be more information that will be needed to comfort the nations that we will not be, you know, impacting. But right now, or this, or not right, not right now, but the studies are showing that we are not in high-impact caribou habitat.
Okay, and that's good information. And I assume that from where your location is, not that I know the whole area, but I, do you know some of the, the caribou background as we went through that process? The other comment I'll make is, is that the working relationship with the First Nation groups that you mentioned, hats off to, uh, your organization to be, to be reaching out to all of them. I think that's really, really important. It's really important from my side, um, that we, that you are engaging the First Nations within Treaty Eight and, uh, and working through the process with them. Is there any need that you guys have to do a bulk sample first at all to make sure that it's what you're expecting to be there? Is there? Or are you just going to, as you work through your process, construction starts and, and the samples have been strong enough up there?
That's a good question. And no, we're not looking at doing a bulk sample. And, but I'm going to hand that off to Dr. Lee and he, you know, probably explain maybe better why we're not doing a bulk sample. And we're just going to go right into the full, or to, for a full Mines Act permit.
We actually did, uh, bulk sampling 2023 for our last diameter core. Uh, that bulk samples be, uh, largely defined of cool quality. Uh, so from cool quality standpoint, there's no need to do any bulk sampling. And also, the 2023 nine-inch core, we have enough volume for the washability test. So from the washing plant design perspective, there's no need to did another larger bulk sampling for washer, uh, wa- washing, uh, plant design. So there's, uh, no, um, no any other plan, uh, in the near future for the, any, uh, bulk sampling test plan. However, before this, uh, um, before this mine have the claim call for, uh, marketing, at that point in time, we can do some of the, uh, the so-called move ball, move ball war open test. Uh, that's need, uh, larger, that's required by the, um, clients market. That's need larger, that's required by the client's market place. But that's be a long way while we start the production, start with the marketing and review fight to the client who is the clients, real clients, who really needs or where put our product in a higher competitive position, get the, in the marketplace. That's a far hat from now.
Okay, thank you very much for that. You didn't mention in regards to the rail, proposed rail loop is near Hasler Flats. No issue from your guys' side or that you're hearing in regards to train car demand or rail time?
Oh yeah, we're hearing that. But particularly coal dust is what we're hearing. Yeah, coal dust number one. And so, you know, we're taking it very serious and we're looking at, you know, new technology and old technology, you know, on how to mitigate coal dust. But that seems to be the number one issue in, from the Hasler Flat Residence, it's coal dust. But also, yeah, train traffic as well.
Okay. And then obviously, your coal would be going to Rupert?
Yes.
And there's enough train cars to be able to haul your coal?
We've been in communication with CN Rail, with Linda Vergata, who's their business development manager, and she's in Winnipeg. And so far, they're saying it should not be an issue. But I know we're what, about six years away from that as well. So we'll continue to stay in communication with them.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Any other questions from council? All right, thank you very much. Merry Christmas, happy holidays to you and your group. Thank you very much again for the presentation and keeping council in Tumbler Ridge and our residents in the loop. And thank you very much for hosting an open house in Tumbler Ridge. I think it's really, really important for our residents and not to beld and know what's happening besides just hearing it from council. So thank you for that.
Well, thank you. And we'll be back and we'll, yeah, the great holiday season and we'll see you in January, February of the new year.
All right, perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to consent agenda. Recommendation. Counselor Julik?
That all items in the December 16th, 2024 consent agenda be moved for information.
Seconder, Counselor Dusso, all in favor? Carried. Are there any items council would like to bring forward for discussion? I'd like to bring forward 7.2 for discussion. If I get a seconder, Counselor Norbury, all in favor? Opposed? Carried. Again, it's just an invitation, I know council's aware of it, but it's in regards to the Geo Perk inviting us out for the sledding Santa event being held on December 20th, meeting at the bottom of the community center for 4:30. If I can just ask council, whoever can attend, please just email me so we know how many people are going to come and then we can decide who's going to pick up a truck and such, if that's all right? So if council can just email myself so I know how many of us are going to go. Okay, any other items council like to bring forward for discussion? Counselor Julik?
7.9, please.
Seconder, Counselor Norbury, all in favor? Opposed? Carried.
I just wanted to make a note of it. I appreciate the letter in there welcoming Marina Shearing to the PCN as the attachment coordinator. The primary care network, they're just moving along. Sometimes it feels slowly, but they're moving along and having Michelle and Marina definitely makes those things move a little bit faster. So just wanted to say congratulations to them for the continued work and to welcome Marina.
Thank you. Any other items council like to bring forward for discussion? Okay, moving forward on bylaws, revenue anticipation bylaw number 745, 2024 for adoption. Report dated December 16th, 2024 from the Chief Financial Officer seeking the adoption of the revenue anticipation bylaw number 745, 2024. Counselor Norbury?
The council adopt the District of Tumbler Ridge Revenue Anticipation Borrowing Bylaw number 745, 2024.
Seconder, Counselor Julik, discussion. Call the question, all in favor? Carried. 8.2 to 2024 to 2028 Financial Plan Amendment Bylaw number 746, 2024 for adoption. Report dated December 16th, 2024 from the Chief Financial Officer seeking the adoption of the 2024 to 2028 Financial Plan Amendment Bylaw number 746, 2024. Counselor Julik?
That council adopts the District of Tumbler Ridge 2024, 2028 Financial Plan Amendment Bylaw number 746, 2024.
Seconder, Counselor Hoffman, discussion. Call the question, all in favor? Motion carries. New business, 2024 Grant and Aid Extensions Request, report dated December 16th, 2024 from the Chief Financial Officer regarding grant and aid extension requests. Recommendation, one at a time. Counselor Norbury?
That council approves Torra's request to carry forward $4,122.90 of funding to July 2nd, 2025, for to complete their website development, membership software and operating needs.
Seconder, Counselor Hoffman, discussion. Counselor Dusso? Counselor Julik?
Yeah, I'm happy to see this in the package as we discuss how we continue to tighten, tighten up reporting and stuff like that. So I'd just like to thank staff for bringing this forward. I don't have a problem extending that. And I guess my one question would be, if this doesn't get done by July 2025, is it a one extended only thing? I'm not sure, I'll be honest, because I didn't read the bylaw properly.
They would have to submit another request.
All right, that's all I need to know. So thank you.
But just to be honest, I mean, I didn't reach out to Torra, but I think they obviously worked with staff to look at this date and they're making sure that this date meets their timelines too. I mean, there's not just our funds, there's matching funds that they have to use, so. Okay, any other discussion? Going to call the question, all in favor? Carried. Second recommendation, Counselor Norbury?
Sorry, Counselor Dusso, beat to the button. That council approves the Grizzly Valley ATV Club's request to carry forward $957.95 in funding for the Power Sports Filling Project to September 1st, 2025.
Seconder, Counselor Dusso, discussion. Call the question, all in favor? Carried. 2024 Audit Report dated December 16th, 2024 from the Chief Financial Officer regarding the 2024 financial audit, or 24, regarding the 2024 audit, I'm sorry. Counselor Julik?
Do you want?
One at a time?
One at a time? That council appoints Eclipse LLP, previously known as Sander Rose Bone Grindle, as the district's auditor for the 2024 audit.
Seconder, Counselor Dusso, discussion. Counselor Hoffman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a general question for staff. Is it typical to have the same auditor year after year? Or is that sort of like a four-year on and off? Or just, just the idea of having somebody else look at the books every once in a while? I'm just wondering if that's part of standard practice?
Yeah, previously, it used to go out to an RFP.
Okay.
Ms. Scott?
Yeah, that's correct. Generally, when you go to RFP, you have a contract with the auditor. I mean, the amount of years can vary. Generally, it's about three years and then you go to tender for an auditor again.
Thank you, perfect.
Any other discussion? Call the question, all in favor? Motion carries. Counselor Julik?
To authorize the district CFO to sign an engagement letter with Eclipse LLP for the district's 2024 audit.
Seconder, Counselor Hoffman, discussion. Call the question, all in favor? Third recommendation, Counselor Julik?
Before I ask, make this, it shows the indirect award Sander Rose Bone Grindle. Should it not be reading Eclipse LLP?
I would think. Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Yeah, I thought so too. I wrote down, I was a miss.
Okay, to waive policy TR1, purchasing policy indirect award to Eclipse LLP for the contract for the 2024 audit.
Seconder, Counselor Norbury, discussion. Call the question, all in favor? Tumbler Ridge Canadian Ranger Patrol License of Occupation, report dated December 16th, 2024 from Director of Corporate Services regarding the Tumbler Ridge Canadian Ranger Patrol License of Occupation. Recommendation? Counselor Julik?
That council authorizes the district to issue a license of occupation to the Tumbler Ridge Canadian Ranger Patrol for a portion of Lot 2, District Lot 3164, Peace River District Plan 28606, with an area approximately 42 meter squared for a five-year term at a nominal fee of $1 per term to be used exclusively for placing two C cans to store materials and equipment.
Seconder, Counselor Hoffman, discussion. Call the question, all in favor? Carried. Tumbler Ridge Junior Canadian Ranger Patrol License of Occupation, report dated December 16th, 2024 from the Director of Corporate Services regarding the Tumbler Ridge Junior Canadian Rangers Patrol License of Occupation. Recommendation, Counselor Dusso?
That council authorizes the district to issue a license of occupation to the Tumbler Ridge Junior Ranger or Junior Canadian Ranger Patrol for a portion of Lot 2, District Lot 3164, Peace River Direct Plan 28606, with an area of approximately 42 meter squared for a five-year term at a nominal fee of $1 per term to be used exclusively for placing one C can and one wooden shed to store materials and equipment.
Seconder, Counselor Julik, discussion. Call the question, all in favor? Moving on to development, covenant removal for 228 Quarry Crescent, report dated December 16th, 2024 from the Chief Administrator Officer regarding development covenant removal for 228 Quarry Crescent. Counselor Norbury?
That development covenant CA 3447549, and option to purchase covenant CA 344750, registered against the title of Parcel A, being a call consolidation of Lots 6 and 7, District Lot 3184, Peace River District Plan BCP 22621, typically known as 228 Quarry Crescent, be discharged.
Seconder, Counselor Julik, discussion. Call the question, all in favor? Carried. Weaving Grant Management Policy for Northern Development Initiative Trust Application, report dated December 16th, 2024 from the Director of Economic and Community Development, requesting council to waive the grant management policy for Northern Development Initiative Trust Applications. Recommendation, please. Counselor Julik?
That council waive the requirements of Grant Management Policy TR55 for the next two years, 2025 and 2026, for applications to Northern Development Initiative Trusts, grant writer support, business facade improvement and economic development capacity building programs, and that staff continue to ensure compliance with all NDIT guidelines and funding requirements.
Seconder, Counselor Dusso, discussion. Counselor Julik?
When I was reading the issue in the purpose in the background, I just want to confirm that there's not, if matching funding was to be required over and above what's noticed in this report, that that would come back to council.
Ms. Scott?
That's correct.
Okay, any other discussion? Call the question, all in favor? Carried. Anything from council side? Just a reminder about December 20th. The bottom of the community center for the sledding Santa. Ms. Scott, if I may ask, we had to council a budget meeting in December. Have we looked at a reschedule for that budget meeting?
A new budget schedule will be coming to council at the January 6th regular meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anything else from council in regards to scheduling meetings? Any notice of motions? Notice of motion, cost benefits and viability of fluoridating the public water. December 2nd, 2024, regular council meeting, Counselor Hoffman brought the following notice of motion forward. Counselor Hoffman?
I'm not sure what, how deep we're supposed to get on this page. Just had a resident bring up the issue to me.
Motion, that's in the agenda.
Sorry. That staff brings a report on the cost benefits and viability of fluoridating the public water.
Okay, seconder, Counselor Julik, discussion. Counselor Hoffman?
Yes, sorry about that. I had a resident bring up the issue before. I was a bit surprised on how low the rates are in BC in general and that it is in fact the municipal responsibility. So I thought it would be reasonable to look at what the costs and benefits of those, of what that would be and go from there.
I got Counselor Norbury and then Counselor Julik.
Thank you, Mayor Kikaka. I appreciate Counselor Hoffman's interest in this. This is the best way to bring forward an idea, let staff prepare reports, see if it's a worthwhile thing. For myself, I kind of look down the line at what comes next. We get a report, report says, yeah, we can add fluoride to the water at a percentage, you know, and it's safe. I mean, I've done some, you know, Googling, I wouldn't say research, but I've done some Googling and I've seen some reports saying that, you know, fluoridation of the water is fine at certain levels. But realistically, maybe it's a simplistic view, but if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Our water, according to our water people, is outstanding. And, you know, the benefits, you know, yeah, maybe our teeth could have added benefit. But, you know, when we're going to the dentist, we have the option to have fluoride or not. And I think removing that choice for people is something that the residents are concerned about. So at this point in time, because, you know, even after a report says it'll be all fine and good within these parameters, I couldn't support it then. I don't think we should be burdening staff with this report. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Julik and then Counselor Kikash?
Yeah, unfortunately, I can't support, unfortunately, I won't be supporting the motion. Again, I would echo what Counselor Norbury says about the staff time and things on it. And I think for me, because I actually know a couple of people, and it's not because I know two, but I'm guessing that if I know two people that have intolerance to fluoride, there's going to be more than that out there in the world. And so if it's added to our drinking water, that then becomes a barrier for them to drink water out of the tap. So that's one of the things. I also did a quick Google search and it doesn't say that we're responsible, it says that we're able to add it to it if we wish to. But not that we as a municipality are responsible for putting fluoride in the water. I would rather not do it. And so I wouldn't support putting it in the water, so I'm not supporting staff time on the report.
Thank you. Counselor Kikash?
Yes, I can't support putting fluoride in the water. If people want fluoride, they can buy toothpaste, they can go to the dentist and have their teeth painted. Otherwise, if you put it in the water, I have to pay 2,500 bucks for a machine to take it out. So, because I moved here because we got good water. And I lived down south all the time and it was, it had fluoride in it, all kinds of crap. So I think I'd rather not have it. So I'm not going to vote for it.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Dusso?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm going to echo what every, every other counselor has said. I can't support this motion for the same reasons, basically. So, sorry.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, motions on the floor, that staff brings a report on the cost and benefits and the viability of fluoridating the public water. Going to call a motion, all in favor? Opposed? Counselor Dusso, Counselor Kukash, Counselor Julik, Counselor Norbury and Mayor Kukaka opposed, motion is defeated. Moving forward, Counselor Business, anything from the floor? Counselor Dusso?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I did make my report for the Tumbler Ridge Museum, they didn't have a meeting in November as well, so if anybody was wondering why there was no report for November, they couldn't get a meeting scheduled. The other thing is, is the, the museum did take their board training and there was a question put out as to why they didn't include other groups. They went through it and they realized that they were basically looking at museum items basically in paleontology, which does not include, include a lot of other groups within the community. So that's why they did not extend an invitation to other groups.
Thank you. Anything else from Counselor Business from the floor? All right, I actually had a pretty easy few weeks, I mean, I was away for holidays for one. Take the opportunity, I actually attended Vancouver for a meeting with industry on an invite. Thank Counselor Norbury for taking the lead on the Holly Jolly, so thank you very much for that, sounded like it went over well, I seen, trying to think what kind of pictures or video that would be. Yeah, two, two four two films, but whatever that is, what's that thing called? Drone, drone video, thanks. Back in the eighties instead of in the two thousands, but yeah, so I seen the drone footage, not just of the Holly Jolly, but also the community center, the Vic Center and Town Hall and through the whole downtown core, I thought it was well done, so I thought it captured the Holly Jolly event fairly well, so thank him for that. And that, that's all I have, anything else from council? Okay, question asked, period, any emailed in questions, Ms. Scott?
No.
Thank you. Take adjournment, Counselor Norbury?
That the December sixteenth, two thousand twenty four, regular council meeting be adjourned.
Secondary, Counselor Dusso, all in favor? Carried.